And he rides Harleys and he's been Lieutenant Colonel Allen West's escort and
Wow.
A few times on the motorcycle tours.
Oh, cool. That's, that's very interesting.
I'm gonna head down to my, to my shelter where I'm sheltered in place for you guys. There you go.
Nice brag, braggart.
Yeah. Well, there you go. No, I didn't move to the other room, the good room.
The good room.
What'd you do, win the grand prize at the NRA's gun auction?
I did. I did.
Did I see my old friend Lionel Hampton in the audience? Did I see him in there?
Yeah, he was out there.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, that's what I thought. And believe it or not, you're talking about aging oneself. He is, he is the real Lionel Hampton. By our time. So everyone, welcome to Lionel Hampton and Lionel.
Are you serious?
Glad to see you here. He is Lionel Hampton. That's his real name.
That was named for Lionel.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, because you're not old enough for the real Lionel Hampton. In fact, isn't he dead?
He died quite a few years ago.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Well, this one, this one brings him back to life. I mean, you don't know. This, this, this Lionel is amazing. You gotta get to know him. You gotta get to know him. You, you can hear the xylophones in the background.
Oh, cool.
Now, we're talking about aging. Now, for me, Lionel's a baby yet, but we're talking about aging here.
I see Dr. Mark Brown's with us.
Great.
Terry Atkinson, hello, glad you're here.
Hey.
They just keep coming. There's John Lambroulous.
Wow.
There's Jim Ratsford.
Oh.
Hey, man.
And there's Patricia Asp.
Hi.
How are you?
Live from Nashville.
Oh, welcome, welcome.
Live in Dallas, and it's not Saturday Night Live, to quote Patricia Asp. That was a text she sent me this morning.
Bill, have you seen? Whoa. Is Jim Talarico with us?
Yes.
Okay, great, great. Jim, welcome. Is that Taylor?
Love your background, Taylor.
Yeah.
Hi Gerald, it's me.
Hello, Taylor. Welcome aboard.
Hi, Taylor.
Yeah, good to see you, Taylor.
Thank you.
You bet.
Jan, you're showing the full screen.
Yeah, so there's nothing, there's nothing further to present. We've done it already. We're good.
Hello, Paula Kalis.
A little reverse engineering.
Is this a presentation of everything you already know about COVID-19?
Yes, and wish you didn't.
And wish.
Good morning, Paula Kalis.
Hey, Bill, it's Chris Hill. How are you?
Hey, Chris Hill. Where are you, sir?
Uh, doing, doing okay? We're staying pretty busy and everybody's healthy so far.
There you go. I assume you're in your office.
My COVID password is so far, so good.
There you go.
I like your thing, Chills iPad.
You know, I'm just a chill kind of guy, Bill.
I, I thought it said Chili's.
Breakfast burrito would be great.
I was gonna ask him if we could order it right now for lunch.
Yeah, my eyes don't focus this early in the morning.
Hey, good morning, Bill. This is Paula Kalis.
Good morning. How, how are you?
I'm, I'm good, but I'm not putting up that picture this morning. Sorry, things just don't look good.
Now, now, how could you not look good?
Bill, that's what you're supposed to say, marvelous darling.
Marvelous darling.
There you go.
Marvelous darling. If you all get a chance to hear Paula give her presentation on brand, do it. It's excellent. She's been doing it around, around the state.
Hey, Bill, I have a couple of those presentations coming up where people from the general audience can be invited. I'll get you those links and you can use them as you wish.
Absolutely. Good morning, Kenneth.
Come on, Bill.
And AJ, morning.
Good morning.
This is, this is so interesting to watch the early birds and the ones that are coming in just right close to eight o'clock and.
Just like a normal meeting.
Exactly.
Except I don't get to wear my dog jeans to normal meetings.
I do like this eight o'clock start for these virtual meetings versus 7:30.
Except for if you're on the West Coast.
Yeah, we got a few. I think we have a few in line.
See, what you don't know is from the waist down, I got my jammies on.
Oh, God.
That I'm dressed up.
Probably has the bunny slippers to go with it.
Aw, God, don't, don't give that away.
Did any of you see?
I didn't mean to call you out like that.
Yeah, yeah, Randy, you were, what'd you say, Randy?
Anybody see that Christopher Reed's son, who is a journalist, broadcaster, broadcast live on Good Morning America in his boxer shorts with a dress shirt and a, and a blazer?
There you go. That, you know, Randy, that's, that's what we needed to know.
I'm used to wearing Lululemons 24/7.
There you go. My job is to bring a little brightness into the day.
So you're gonna stand up?
No.
Thank you.
Too much brightness?
Appreciate it.
Or, or as they say in New York, for a doll, I will.
I wanna see Patricia stand up. I wanna see the dog jeans.
Oh, I don't need to say, okay, I'll, I'll do my camera.
All right. That looks fine.
All right.
Randy, I'll give you a $2 bill not to stand up.
It's been dog jeans since March 14th.
For those of you that don't know, Patricia's joining us from Atlanta.
Oh, wow.
And her fame to fame, and it's a beautiful one, for all of the Service Masters Corporation, Service Master Corporation, all the companies, she ran the servant leadership portion for all the companies. And she's actually flown in to speak at Success North Dallas.
Thanks, Bill. Very nice. But I've only retired, what, four times? I've long been a government. So it's great fun.
Morning, Steve.
Hey, good morning. How are you, Bill?
Very well, thank you.
Good. I'm looking forward to this unique approach.
Hey, Steve Sharp.
Hey, what's going on, brother?
It's John.
Oh, John, good to see you. I saw Chris Hill's face on there. I thought, Chris, you sound an awful lot like John.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
Sorry, guys.
Lisa K.K., Lisa K.
Good morning.
Your beautiful face.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Morning.
Lisa started something a few years back called the Fellowship Power Lunch, and it meets monthly at the Crest Infinity on 121. It's quite a, quite an interesting and wonderful group.
It really is, yes. We have incredible speakers and authors.
Yes.
Good Lord keeps us scheduled out at least 10 months at a time.
Wow. Hey, 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 Bill?
Yes.
I, I just had our resident young executive join us for the meeting as well.
That wouldn't be a gentleman named Tucker Hill, would it?
I believe it would be. He went to get some coffee, I think. So you're gonna join us?
Have him bring me a cup, too.
I'll, I'll have it right on the screen for you.
Thank you.
I like it.
Jeannie Culver, good morning, good morning.
Good morning. Did everybody get you what you needed yesterday?
Perfect. Now, Bill, if you give me your address, I'll have my drone fly you a cup of coffee over there. Excellent. I'll message it to you.
Hey, Bill, how many people are you expecting on this call?
Uh, we have 180, I think, registered. Okay.
This may well be the biggest one that I've gotten so far.
Yes.
Our, we had 301 register for the April Success North Dallas meeting. We'll, we'll see.
So we said 180 registered. So, how, Mr. Bill?
Mr. Sharp, you're looking good.
Well, thank you, buddy. Good to see you today. I haven't managed to cross the, the town to see your smiling face in a while.
It's, it's been too long. Been too long.
Let's get together for some Mexico food here pretty soon as the doors open.
Oh, yes, yes. Gotta get, have to get things rolling again.
Oh, man, I tell you, I am ready. I, I really, I've gotten all honed in in my comfortable shirt and jammy pants, though, so I'm, I'm trying to figure out.
You can stick with that TV preaching, I guess.
I think that's it.
I know. We, we need to have a big pajama party March downtown.
We're having one.
Big pajama party, yeah.
Hello, Terry Isaac. Glad to have you here. We're gonna start in about two minutes. We're gonna start about 10 after 8:00 and we'll get it going then.
Oh, perfect, because I, my network knocked out my Wi-Fi, so I gotta back up. So I, I thought I might have missed the game, so that's good.
Well, I thought we were gonna have a quiet meeting, Terry.
I do think the back, I do think the back to work process is going to be interesting, especially like with the millennials on my staff. I'm gonna start rolling people in two days at a time. It's gonna be a very abrupt and very difficult adjustment.
Yes.
I'm working on that plan now, like, how do we go back to work?
Yeah. But we have, a lot of our work is, is overseas, and we have a lot of our work is Zoom meetings with people around the United States that are all on our staff. But the ones that go to the office, I can see in their eyes when I talk about going back on Monday, they're going, do we really have to do that? Because, you know. There's a measure of pain inside that joy, is all I can say.
Wonder what the commutes will be like.
Exactly.
Well, traffic has been almost nothing. I've, I've been in almost every day this whole time, and my commute went from about 20 to 30 minutes to about 7:00.
Wow.
I, every, coming down midway, I made, from Plano to Addison, every day I make about 13 or 14 green lights in a row. Just fly, fly down the road.
How come more and more people don't get to? Ever see you.
Do what, Jan?
How come your staff told me they hardly ever see you?
Well, it, it's kinda like shadow boxing. You just gotta be there.
Thanks, John. Good to have you. All right, folks. Jan, let's go ahead and get this thing started. All right, very good. I'm gonna mute you all, and speakers, when you get up there, turn your lights on. In the meeting now, I'll start to everybody. Hey, Bill, why don't you try muting everybody? They're not muted for me. Done. This is one week stretch.
We were having fun.
Can y'all hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right, good morning. My name's Jan Clodner, and I'd like to welcome all of you to Success North Dallas's first Town Hall, virtual Town Hall meeting. We'll be getting started in just a few minutes, but a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Even though your mic will be muted, please make sure it remains muted that way until the conclusion of the meeting. If you are using a live video of yourself, please make sure your camera is stationary. No mobile phones with the camera on while you're making breakfast or cleaning the garage. At the conclusion of the Town Hall, we'll be taking questions using the chat function. Please type your question in chat, and it will be read by the monitor. Thank you for being here. Let's begin. For the past 30 years, on the third Wednesday of every month, Success North Dallas has had the best of the best in speakers from all over the world. These speakers come not to be paid, but because of the people in the world. The people who have founded 97 companies, created over 1,000 jobs, and turned out seven of the standout entrepreneurs of the year. And now, allow me to introduce to you my longtime friend and S&amp;D business partner, founder and CEO, direct to you from Frisco, Texas, Mr. Bill Wallace. Unmute your mic. Everybody, I unmuted my mic. Good morning and welcome. Thank you, Jan. Thank you for all the help. Jan is the epitome of volunteers. Michelle, we have a whole crew of volunteers that have helped to make this happen, and, and I couldn't do it, couldn't do it without them. They helped us put together a first virtual regular meeting, now our first Town Hall, and above and beyond. So from the bottom of my heart, simple thanks. I couldn't do it without you, and you've kept this thing going for 31 years, and I absolutely love you for it. And when you think about Success North Dallas, when you think about a little bit of the history, for those of you that are new, I started Success North Dallas at the behest of my two mentors, Herb Kelleher Southwest Airlines and Roger Meyer. At that point in time, in 1988, was the largest Cadillac dealer in the Southwest. I was in their offices one day, and Herb Kelleher said to me, Wallace, when you figure out why I should do business with you, come back. Now, get out and figure it out. He called me the next day, but that, over the next few months, March of 1988 to October 88, I looked at the things people did not like in networking, and I eliminated them to put together the foundation to build a very high-level networking group, mentor, and formal board of directors for one another, where we could come together and create. And when you look at the logo, the interconnected sees, well, that, that really tells the whole story. Connecting the right people for the right reasons at the right time. And that's truly what we do. The qualifications for membership in Success North Dallas are simple. Be a success in your own eyes, honor your commitments, and be a giver. And when I say be a success in your own eyes, I'm simply saying, we have no right, no one has any right to define what success is for you. Honor your commitments. Let's go back to the handshake. Assuming we can do that again, or at least the elbow bop. And be a giver, it's all about our fellow men and women. So ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Success North Dallas. I'm honored, we're honored, that you're here. Today, we're gonna be doing a few things differently, some more first, and one of those starts with our brand-new website. Our website's been built by RP1, one of our partner members, and I want to thank you, Brad Parnell, and I want to thank your extraordinary team. We were able to put this together in about a month when we realized what was happening with COVID-19. We looked at the things that we wanted to get done, that we hadn't been able to. We've redone all the marketing materials, we've built a new website, we've enhanced several other things, and now we've started a Town Hall, a Town Hall. And it's, and it's, and it's pretty amazing when you think about it. But I want to thank, I, I want to thank our partner members as well. Our partner members were the people that have come alongside of us as we've gone through our 25th, our 25 years. On our 25th anniversary, we looked at how are we gonna go another 25 years? And so we, we'd never had corporate memberships. We'd always been individual memberships, but we decided we would let, have a select number of corporate memberships as partner members, those that have come alongside of us financially. And you can see them on the screen. We so appreciate everything that you've done, and we're so glad you're here. A tremendous group. Do business with them. And also, one of our partner members, preferred technology solutions, Neil Medwin, I asked him to write a white paper. They're cyber, they do cybersecurity and a lot of other things. They're a technology provider, but I asked him to do a white paper dealing with cybersecurity as we're experiencing it right now in this COVID-19. And that particular white paper will be going out to our list, to all of our people this afternoon at 1:05. And I just want to thank you very, very much, Neil and David Hodges, for all the things that you've done, and it truly makes a difference. And oh, by the way, you already did it, but say happy birthday to Tom Neeson, giving one of these birthday claps and waves. And Tom was really one of the key reasons we started the partner members. So Tom, I thank you. Bill Barnett was the first one that came alongside of us and so many others. And of course, you already heard from Chris Hill. But we do a quote when we're moving into all of this, and, and the quote is a very, very, well, I want to say something about social media first, before I do the quote. But social media, don't, don't hesitate. Get these things out. Tell people where you are. Tell them you're having a good time, and if you get a couple of great tidbits, go ahead and post them out on social media. You know, Kathy Kletterball with our Twitter, Lucinda, Hannah's our, Lucinda Ruck are LinkedIn, and they just do magical things. They do magical things with, oh, let me put it this way. I've got so many tweets during and after the meeting. It takes an hour or two to answer them, so I can only say that. The quote, we do a quote, and I looked long and hard to find the quote that pretty well looked at how we got here and how we're gonna get out of them. And thank you, Albert Einstein, but we cannot solve today's problems using the same level of thinking that created them. We cannot solve today's problems using the same level of thinking that created them. And that so, so, so sums up what we're doing and why we're doing it. I got a telephone call from Dr. Gerald Turner. This was in early March, and he said, Bill Wallace, you need to cancel your March meeting. And I said, what are you talking about? He said, this COVID-19, you need to cancel your March meeting. I have been sequestered since early January into February with 18 others researching this with MIT, at MIT and Johns Hopkins in Cambridge. And not that I can send you something on it yet, but you will be canceling your meeting. That's why we canceled about 10 days, two weeks ahead of everybody else. Gerald and I further talked about telling some stories, talking about what's going on, and can we put together a panel, which we did. But you see, Gerald Turner has worked on every pandemic in the past, for the past three decades. Gerald Turner has worked in 80 countries advising governments, small and large, inviting leaders of corporations, corporate Americans from Fortune Fives to Ones. And if you remember the disaster in Puerto Rico, Gerald Turner is the person that rewired and brought electricity back to Puerto Rico. So Gerald, I want to welcome you. I want to thank you for your input, and I want to thank you for sharing today and putting together this great panel. Ladies and gentlemen, please virtually welcome Dr. Gerald Turner, our moderator today.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace and everyone, and welcome to everyone to, to take this journey with us this morning. For those who are outside of the greater Dallas area, you probably won't relate to my comment about late last night, we hours of the morning. You probably heard, those who are here in the greater Dallas County area, heard us on the back nine, basically practicing, rehearsing the effects, if you will, of the perfect storm, which we could not import into the program, unfortunately, but it was a bit of a show last night. Some of you might recall Chief Justice, well, I won't age anyone, but Justice Potter Stewart, Chief Justice, good time back, basically, was asked to evaluate and define a, a particular experience that he had never encountered before. And it was one, I'm not gonna mention the case, basically, but it was a very difficult and complex case, and his comment basically to the individuals asking him was, you know, I've never experienced one and have never been in the presence of one, but I'll know it when I see it. Okay? Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the perfect storm. We find ourselves today in the midst of an oceanic weather phenomenon commonly referred to as a perfect storm. It unleashes a horrendous torrent of devastating consequences on our unsuspecting society. We will likely not suffer the global trauma imposed by the Spanish Flu of 1918, and where 50 million people or more basically expired as a result of that particular flu infection, nor will we suffer the kinds of consequences that the, the country of Europe, or the area, I'm sorry, the area of Europe suffered with the Black Plague. Some of you probably don't remember that one, but in which 60% of the Europe population in the 14th century, of course, none of us were there, in the 14th century, in which 60% of Europe's population succumbed to the deadliest viral pandemic in human history. In our own lifetime, the COVID-19 pandemic will likely be, likely be the greatest socioeconomic and industrial disruption of our lifetime. Problems that accompany these disruptions will not be solved, as Bill mentioned and alluded to and Jan related to earlier, will not be solved by the same mental models that the, mental models is a term I would say invented at MIT and, and extended, if you will, by Peter Senge in a variety of his writings. But those, these problems today are gonna require a different mindset, a different way of thinking, a different way of processing data, a different way of adapting to the new culture. And I say new culture because a lot of people are expecting and hopeful that they'll be able to go back to the, the old times, okay, and saying that, you know, we'd like for things to go back to the, you know, the kinds of things that we were doing before. Regretfully, there will be a lot of disruptive things that have happened in this particular era in our lifetimes that have been very disruptive. As a result, some of the more positive disruptive things basically catalyzed by the COVID-19 pandemic will yet become one of the greatest, greatest, greatest eras, eras of our time. So again, ladies and gentlemen, I welcome you to the perfect storm. Perfect storm basically is, is an old, as I mentioned earlier, an old oceanic concept that whereby you have three major storm fronts, three major storm fronts, and the likelihood of seeing any one of those storm fronts, and many of you have seen the movies, so you probably can reflect on that. Many of the storm fronts are, the storm fronts kind of individually, individually, each of these storm fronts that we have on this particular graphic can be considered a black swan. I don't like to use a lot of metaphors here, but a black swan event, many of you probably are familiar with or have heard of. And basically, it's a metaphor that describes an event that comes as a surprise. And basically, it's a metaphor that describes an event that comes as a surprise first and foremost. It has major, major monumental effect and is often appropriately, inappropriately rationalized after the fact with the benefit of hindsight. You probably caught that, rationalized after the fact with the benefit of hindsight. Darren is why, the saying, if you will, Einstein's saying basically makes a lot of sense because we have experienced a major traumatic transformation in our lives, our culture, our society, our economy. So all of these things basically taken into account have all accumulated and created what we call presently the perfect storm. That involves also the economic instability, which we started experiencing in March, and very, very disruptive supply chains globally, globally. And also certainly that impacted us very heavily as well too. So welcome again to the perfect storm. And to begin, I'd like to introduce you to our very distinguished panel that have an extensive background in a variety of business transformation arenas and things that they have done with regard to change what I call tune-ups, turnarounds and transformation with regard to business. And we all have been involved in helping companies survive and go and make the journey, if you will, and be able to, to sustain themselves in times of very difficult times, I should say. First, I'd like to introduce Jim Rashford, and many of you probably here in the Dallas area know Jim. And Jim is a, is the Executive Director of Texas Consilium, a very, very distinguished, if you will, economic development organization for the state of Texas. Focused on growing Texas economy by helping Texas businesses improve their prosperity and achieve their true potential. There is no bad time to be the strongest that you can be, is one of Jim Rashford's very, very favorite sayings. Jim Talarico is a nationally recognized small to midsize business expert as well, located also in Dallas, Texas area, Dallas, Fort Worth area. He's a certified management consultant, which gives him credentials in over 40, I think 48 countries now in terms of his professional expertise and acumen and understanding of how businesses work. Next, I'd like to introduce Doug Toby. Doug happens to be in California right now, so he didn't, didn't enjoy the show last night, if you will, that we experienced here. But Doug's a senior business advisor as well and a financial leader who works with startup and emerging growth companies to dramatically increase and help companies realize enterprise value. And he creates greater social good through the enterprise itself via products and services. And has a track record that includes generating value propositions and business models. Doug is a CPA, licensed and registered CPA and an MBA. And he's also a student and educator, if you will, of accounting, finance, innovation, entrepreneurship and strategy. Like for everyone, Bun, to, you know, get nowhere, mostly, everybody's mostly muted. So if you can just kind of give a wave to the, the panel, I, I use the British wave basically. So I'm, I'm going to be trying to bring the UK into the picture. Your success, this is a moment before we move on. Your success with regard to making it and surviving this crisis. Again, as part of, Justice Potter Stewart said, you're probably echoing his sentiments by saying basically, well, I've never experienced or seen or been with one of these before, but I'll know it when I see it. If anyone had told us that we would see a country, an entire nation shut down, if you will, in terms of economics, the economic impact, the financial impact, the social impact, the political impact, legal, environmental, everything, we probably would never have accepted that as being a possibility. Understand that your success as a business recovery and continuity in that will depend primarily on how you, how well you're able to manage five major teams, which we're going to discuss today. And we're going to allow you and afford you an opportunity to ask, we hope we will ask a lot of questions. We really are expecting this to be your program and very highly interactive. So we're really expecting a good bit of dialogue to the level we almost had in the beginning. You know, while everybody was logging in, for example, we had a lot of fun before we launched the program. And hopefully that'll continue throughout. The five basic areas that you need to master at the very least are the understanding of the nature of the turbulence, defining the turbulence. If you can't define it and can't program and can't, don't know where you're headed, then an old sage experience basically is something we've lived with, is that if you, if you don't know where you're headed, for example, anywhere you go or whatever path you take will get you there. Evaluating the health and wellbeing of your company, what does that mean? You know, is your company, does your company have the stamina to run a 50 yard dash or a 10, you know, a 10 mile walk? Or can you make the marathon? And basically, the demands on your companies today probably feel more like a marathon because it's so much involved in a, an environment, a culture of uncertainty. And managing uncertainty is really difficult because by the very nature of what uncertainty happens to be, we don't necessarily know what kind of programming to use to make those decisions. Developing a recovery plan to best leverage your resources, knowing what those resources happen to be, and also being able to leverage those and take advantage of those to help you sustain and help you grab hold of that life preserver and be able to maintain and get through the journey itself. Review and invent your business model for the long haul. Once you've done, for example, you have an understanding of the turbulence, you know what your health and the company is, you have a recovery plan, and also you'll be reviewing and inventing your business model for the long haul. Short haul, of course, is very important where you look at your company's, your company's finances and so forth. Liquidity and solvency being paramount, liquidity being that you've got enough cash to, you know, get through the day, through the month and so on and so on. And of course, solvency having to do with long-term planning, like when you bring your employees back on board. And of course, execute, I'll tell you a little bit more about this one later. But set your compass and section for the journey ahead. As I mentioned just a moment ago, if you don't know where you're headed, then anywhere out you take will get you there. So we're going to try to help you navigate through these times and sustain yourselves throughout this transition as we approach the new normal. Each of the panelists, I'm going to ask to respond to a key question in terms of how they would characterize or how they would identify this pandemic and also how it impacts business in general. Let me begin with Jim Rashford. Jim, how would you characterize or how would you define the environment or the culture or the era that we happen to be in today?
Well, that's a, that's a pretty broad question. So I, I think we're all trying to get a grasp of what's going on in the world. This, this is one of those sudden impacts that's not just affecting your business. It's affecting your competitors, it's affecting your customers, your prospects. It's affecting everyone around the world in some way. Of course, the real challenge, bringing it back to the particular business level, it's, is that it's affecting everyone in a somewhat different way as well. So if you're a manufacturer of toilet paper for the consumer product distribution area, you're worried about ramping up and trying to keep up with demand. If you're producing toilet paper for the institutional market, you're practically shut down. And so with everything that's going on, obviously a lot of uncertainty, but ultimately it's about how do we understand that and how do we apply it to our particular situation?
Thank you, thank you, Jim. I would like Jim Talarico to, to contribute to that, this discussion as well too. Jim, how would you characterize as well and build on what Jim Rashford has already shared with us?
Well, I concur with, with, with Jim's comments. And I like your model where you look at the economic considerations, the people slash pandemic situation as well as the business situations. With respect to the economy, as everybody knows, two down quarters of GDP growth means a recession. And the minimum time of a recession is usually six months. So we're certainly heading in that direction. One thing I like to point out is it's natural, I think, to kind of look back at the last crisis, the credit crunch. And I, I think what's different about this crisis is that there isn't a systemic problem with our financial markets like there was during that crisis. I think the, the situation that we want to look at is 9/11. Because in, during 9/11, there was an international problem that had to be solved. It was a people problem. And basically what had happened was, once there was a solution and people felt confident that that solution was working, the economy was restored. So when you talk about an L-shaped recovery, well, you got it wrong. And so things go down and they stay that way for a while. A W, you get it right and there's a blip before you get back to where you want to go. Or U shape where you kind of get it right the first time and you go back to where you were before. And so I'm hoping that it's the, the third situation that we encounter. And you know, six months or a year from now, things are better. With respect to the people pandemic situation, of course, there are CDC guidelines about social distancing and good hygiene and isolating yourself if you're ill. There are also government regulations at a federal, state and local level in terms of phase one, phase two, phase three, for example. When we talk about people, there are micro issues in terms of your employees. Is somebody in their home ill? Do they have a situation where they don't have anybody to watch the kids because they're not, not now in school? And then there are the macro issues, you know, do I need to furlough people, lay them off and so forth? As far as the business goes, you know, again, I, I concur with what you said. I think you want to look at your financial plan and you want to look at where your customers are. You want to look at where your suppliers are. And you need to manage that all as well.
Thank you, thank you much. Doug, and before I go to Doug Toby and get his perspectives as well, as a master in finance and accounting, like the audience to consider any questions you might have for the panel because our next segment after this question review basically is going to be open to you. So please submit any questions you have with regard to comments that we make or just ideas or thoughts you'd like for us to address, please. Doug, your thoughts?
Fundamentally, I believe this has been described as a novel event, which means this, it's not routine. It's not a routine emergency or crisis that we can look back to the past and say, oh, that's just follow these steps. In other words, there's no pre-cooked how-to answers to be prescribed or followed. So I think that's key. Another is this is a compound issue crisis. It involves medical, financial, you mentioned supply chain, economic, it's actually psychological. And there's other factors involved. So there's many, many issues to deal with at once. Although they, it may be temporary, but it's permanent, definite period. So we've got to navigate this. Which gets us to risk management. We're in a period of uncertainty. This, this type of crisis doesn't happen frequently. And so the consequences are not really known. And therefore the answers are not known. And to come up with answers, we have to use a sound problem solving process. But it's going to have to be iterative, more than likely. It's got to be agile. It's going to include failure in the process, in, in evolution. But we have to recognize those failures as learning exercises.
Thank you, Doug, appreciate it, thank you. And this will be to answer, we have a question here. When will things at Success North Dallas return to normal? And we'll be able to get back together and, and be a family, if you will, as Bill has established over this period of time. So we're going to, first of all, let me share some things with you, not going into a real deep dive information that I've discovered and since I've been working on this, this particular very, very novel virus. And this is novel, it has no predecessors. If you look at MERS, SARS or anything of that nature. So this is going to be, this is going to be a long journey, not a sprint in terms of us getting back to what we believe to be normal. However, please keep in mind that we're evolving into a new normal where things are bound to and will most likely, very definitely in some instances, change our lives and change for us. And so we're going to have to respond to things differently, as Bill alluded to earlier, with a different mindset, a different way of thinking and so forth. So since Bill actually is in charge, Bill and Jan are in charge of keeping Success North Dallas open and running, I'll probably share with the, the questioner predominantly, I'll probably suggest that we don't know. We live in a time of uncertainty. So when we'll get back together as a crowd without the six foot distance requirement and doing elbow bumps and so on and so on, really can't tell you that right now because there's expectations that this bug is really going to visit. We don't know how it's going to operate in the summer, but that it might revisit again, if you will, and significantly, if you will, in the fall. So that is something, all that uncertainty packing into what we're currently living makes it extremely difficult. And that's what Doug was referring to as well too, with regard to risk management. Okay. So anyway, I'd like to open it up and let's see, respond to some of the questions, practical everyday, specific items. Let me refer this particular question to the panel. Anyone that wishes to address, what are the practical, everyday, specific things we can do or items we can do every day to help our businesses pull out of this situation? Anyone on the panel care to address, Jim Talarico? Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I think that the first thing that you want to do is you want to look at your financial situation so you can make a good decision. So that means pulling out your AR aging report, your AP aging report, looking at what you have in the bank and trying to put it together, a cash flow forecast. So you know what you got to work with. One of the things that I think is, is a very good idea is to take out a piece of paper, kind of do a triage thing. And across the top, list each one of your business functions. So finance, operations, sales, engineering, research, development, whatever it is. And then draw a bunch of lines across that sheet and put week one, week two, week three, week four. And what you should do is you should have goals and objectives every week for each one of those areas. And you should bring in your people, your managers, and they should be part of that. And you should ask your managers, well, what happens if our supplier can't furnish us the supplies that we need? Who are the additional suppliers? Or if we can't get those supplies, what are alternative products that we can use in their place? So the planning part, I think, is really important. Obviously, customers are as well. So you want to touch them. They need to engage. One of the things that's happening right now is there, there's a lot of debt out there. So we may need to be creative in terms of offering 90-day free financing, that kind of thing. You're back to the supply issue. I think I read that about a third of businesses are going to have some kind of supply issues. So I think that's important as well. And you have to keep educated, just two more quick thoughts. You have to keep educated on what's happening because we're all going through this, you know, for the first time. And, and being flexible, I think, is key.
Thank you, thank you. Doug, your thoughts on that? And then I'd like to get Jim Rashford to, to contribute.
Yeah, I think Jim touched on this, but there's opportunity in crisis. And if we remember that we're all in this together, so we're not, we shouldn't be taking advantage of our customers or our employees, suppliers, we're actually all in this together. So if there's a way to see the silver lining in the situation, we may come, be able to transform our business and come out better for whatever the new normal is going to be.
Absolutely. And we would hope that would be the path that we take and the path that we experience. Mr. Rashford, your thoughts?
Sure, to sort of build on what Jim and Doug said, and to put it into somewhat of a framework, I think most business leaders have done, one way or another, a SWOT analysis for their business, assessing their strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. On a day-to-day basis, obviously, we've got a lot of changes happening in our environment in which we operate. And those are very rapidly affecting that SWOT analysis. So you know, we, we've created a lot of weaknesses and challenges to our business. What perhaps were threats, maybe threats we didn't even think of before are now occurring. And they've created disruption and weakness and, and challenges in our business. It may be financial, it may be revenue or customers, or it may be something with our employees. Those threats have actually impacted our business. And so I think reassessing that SWOT analysis, which maybe we did, you know, years ago and haven't thought too much about it, reassessing that on a daily and weekly basis now is, is really key. And as Doug said, there's lots of unknowns, lots of risks, and that SWOT analysis can change. And based on what you're finding and learning each day and each week, it may affect the direction that you go. So to go to your theme of perfect storm, as the leader of your business, you're the captain of the ship. And, and you have your vision on where you're trying to get to. And you may have had to adjust that because that's simply not achievable anymore. So you've adjusted your direction, but you're very actively watching for threats. Where's the storm going? What are the hazards? And you're steering on a, on a, on a real-time basis to maneuver around. And you're steering on a, on a, on a real time basis to maneuver around what you see as best you can.
Thank you. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you so much. My apologies to Michelle and Tom, who, Michelle asked the the most recent question, then Tom, the earlier one. So forgive me that, but this is almost like a visual acuity test, trying to read a lot of these from my screen. Regret that. Randy Savage has a question, basically, trying to avoid politics and says, but how does one, how does the panel believe the leadership for lack thereof, basically, how that that impacts the ability to survive and recover? Panel? Trying to avoid the politic, yeah, trying to avoid the politics. Let me read that one again from Randy. Trying to avoid the politics, but how does the panel believe the leadership or lack thereof impact the the ability to survive and recovery?
This is Doug. I think the leadership is the key to the problem solving process. And because of the multifaceted issues, it's going to take an integrated, comprehensive process. Rather than, for instance, city by city, state by state process. So to me, leadership is key. And perhaps Dr. Fuji is our best leader at this point. But, you know, the answers aren't no, it's just going to take solid, integrated, comprehensive process led by someone I believe is unknown at this, at this point.
Absolutely. I want to interject a point before I ask the rest of the panel to respond. And that is that I researched a variety of articles over the years predominantly around how politics impacts solution or resolution of a crisis. And we are in the midst of that right now to the point where we're seeing a lot of that going on, but politics and human nature being what they are basically, do have a tendency to influence our decisions and our actions and certainly the responses with regard to a situation like this with this pandemic. So there's a lot on the web, if you wish to Google or any other resource you use to try to identify the politics of infectious disease or outbreak management and so forth. You'll find some fascinating articles on there. These types of things do not happen without political intervention. So I don't know how you get through it and politics has as broad a definition as Potter Stewart experienced when he tried to identify. I'll tell you, basically, his challenge was to identify and define prostitution. That was his challenge back then, when Chief Justice Potter Stewart indicated that he'd never, never experienced it and so forth, but he'll know it when he sees it. So anyone else on the panel wish to respond to this? And then we need to move on.
Yeah, Gerald, I would just add that we can't control what our political leaders do, or most of us aren't in a position to have any significant influence. And so it's just another risk factor out there to be assessing. So it's part of that environment we have to be aware of. And as leaders of our businesses, we have to respond and adjust appropriately.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to our next question. Let's see, we have a question from my friend from Washington DC, Jeff Parks. And Jeff is, Jeff says, I work with local governments in the DC Northern Virginia area. They have had to make major adjustments to the pandemic. He's curious to know what participants have seen as impacts on the local governments in the Dallas area. What have we seen here in the greater Dallas area, in particular, I guess, the Dallas County? So what have we seen basically politically and otherwise with regard to our county? Don't everybody jump in at once?
Well, I think that Dallas County is different than some of the surrounding counties. And what we've seen in Dallas County is similar to what we see in other big cities. I live in Denton County and in Denton County, I think that generally things have been really well handled. The problem isn't as intense as it is here. I was originally from New Jersey and talked to a friend who has a business that requires he travels around every day. And he told me every day he sees four ambulances going someplace to respond to a call. So I think it's really different in different areas. But I think in Texas, it's been pretty good. And I've been pretty impressed with the way the government is handling it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else before we move on? Good to go? Okay. We have a question also from Steve. I don't know Steve's name. Oh, okay. There we go. Steve Sharp. He's asked a question about the message of of Jesus being, the message of Jesus being blocked in many places around the world, and especially in this pandemic. People are living without hope. Our ministry actually has explained because this because of the advanced technology to reach the Middle East and also central area, Central Asia. But we need to fly overseas or do we need to fly overseas ASAP to engage local leaders in, let's just say, values and spiritual, spiritual areas and so on and so on. Does spirituality have any place here regardless of what particular spiritual persuasion you happen to be part of?
I don't know about spiritualism per se, but I would suggest that hope is essential. But it has to be rooted in brutal honesty about the situation. Where you then give a plausible, probably rational hope for a better future. So if that's spiritualism or touches on it, then that's, that's my thought about hope.
Okay. There was some very disturbing news I saw on the way to work this morning that had apparently the stress and pressures, if you will, and I think those at the front lines, particularly the doctors, the nurses, people who are actually tending to those individuals that are afflicted with the disease. And the very sad news was that people just feel over so overwhelmed that they've taken their own lives. That's very disturbing to me, but predominantly working with some ER departments just recently with regard to the pressures that these departments are under is absolutely phenomenal. So I would imagine holding on tightly, if you will, to the tether that is going to be important to get us through this.
I would add, Gerald, that's a strikes me as another case where churches and folks who want to make a difference in the world through religion and spirituality. They have a challenge. They can't bring their congregation together as they've traditionally done. And yet there's a huge need out there as people are looking for hope and looking for connection. And so how do they meet that need given the restrictions that they have? And so you know, the the idea of, well, it's really an application of creativity. It's an application of entrepreneurship. How do we take what we have, what we can do and meet that increasing need for what we have?
Absolutely.
I don't have the answer, but it's just another case of any organization and their leadership trying to adapt. Whether you're a restaurant or whether you're a church.
Right. That's very key. Mr. Talarico, do you have a very brief comment you'd like to make? And we need to move on to the next area?
Yeah, just to end on a positive note, if you will, I think we're over the worst of it, you know, as phase one opens up. I think churches are going to be able to have people begin to attend and and hopefully will will become better connected as we move through this pandemic.
Okay, thank you for that. My apologies for, we had a flood of good questions. We won't be able to respond to this timeframe, basically. But forgive me for moving on to the next area without addressing all your questions, but keep them coming, for example. I'm sure at some point, and the panel also has access to these questions, that we'll try to integrate a lot of these inquiries, if you will, into our responses. The next area you want to be involved in is of course evaluating the health and wellbeing of your business. Evaluating the health and wellbeing of your business. This basically means, as I had mentioned earlier, the ability, the constitution that you have within your organization to make the journey itself, whether the journey is short, intermediate, long, what have you for the long haul. And I mentioned that also earlier that this is not a sprint. Okay, it's not a sprint. And you're going to have to constantly keep adjusting to the formulation of this new normal. Okay, we don't know what the new normal is going to look like. First of all, I can tell you firsthand and personally with the knowledge that I have about this bug, it's going to be with us a very, very, very long time. So it's not going to disappear in the summer because of the weather. We don't know when a virus, the vaccine, if you will, for the virus is going to come into play. But it is going to continue to impact our lives. So so expect to have some decision making and decisions, some challenges, if you will, going forward. How would you define the panel? I'm going to turn this over to the panel. Define basically the health and wellbeing of your business very briefly, if you would, please. And anybody that would like to lead us off here?
Sure, I can start. So at Texas Consili, and we have a process for virtually everything. And so this strikes me that let's look at our four functional areas we define as maps. All, all functions of a business fall into those four areas. The M of maps is for money, what's going on with our finances, our profitability, our cash flow. The A is for the activities from the inputs to the outputs of the product or service we provide. And so let's assess what's going on with our suppliers, with our processes, the people and the process they're going through to create our product or service. And then the P of maps is for the people, the employees of the business, what's going on with them, their health, their availability, and our need for them or additional needs in some cases. And then the S of maps is for sales, what's going on with our customers, how's this affecting them? And look at each of those four functional areas and again, SWOT analysis framework. What's, what's good, what's bad, what's, what's, what's a strength, what's a weakness, and what do we need to change?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I might add a couple of other actors to consider. One is time. Time is one of those limited resources. It's kind of interesting in this case. We need to act decisively and with urgency. And then be able to change or pivot quickly upon learning as we do this iterative process. But yet we have to look at the long term. So it's kind of a mix of survival in the short term. And then, you know, succeeding in the long term. And that success in the long term is probably based in resiliency. And seeing opportunity in the crisis. And seeing, you know, moving forward to that better day.
Absolutely. And Talarico, I'm gonna get back to you in just a moment, but the forgive me for interrupting, but the the health, a lot of the health and wellbeing of your business, we were talking about the political implications before, but what is labeled and dubbed the new stimulus package, CARE, and how it's going to help our companies predominantly is dealing with the barn after the horses have already left. Okay, so that's not necessarily defining what will be healthy for your company and the wellbeing of your business going forward. And sustaining yourself through the liquidity, having cash flow available, if you will, and also the long term solvency that you have with your company with regard to investing. And so these are the kinds of things that you really need to consider very seriously. And Jim, Talarico, you about to contribute?
Yeah, so just to add a final point, I was on a webinar and one of my colleagues said that a business is either thriving, maintaining, slipping, or surviving. And in many cases, we've gone from thriving to surviving. I think the key is to stay focused on short term opportunities. Ideally with your customers, but if your customers are slow to return, then I think you really need to put on your thinking cap and implement some creative sales and marketing ideas to reach new niches.
Thank you for that. Randy Mayu, one of our very dear friends and invaluable resource, if you will, to the greater Dallas area. Has posed a question to Jeff Parks, my buddy from Washington DC, Virginia area. And if you guys, as a matter of fact, what you're doing is what we encourage you to do too, also as the audience. And that's to interact with one another, you know, and I mean, we're, yeah, we're confined to quarters for the most part, but this is a social event. So make certain if you have time and opportunity, engage in dialogue here. There's a way, I think some of you know how, if you have a private question, I think many of you who are Zoom proficient, know how to direct a question to a specific person as well as to the panel. So we encourage you to do that as well. Let me see if we can pick another question here that relates to, okay, Zip Zipton says logistics, early stages. Okay, I'm gonna try to bounce down. We have some brilliant people on, brilliant people in the audience today because I can't, I can't get through a lot of these great questions going forward, but the Michelle MacArthur, Happy Wednesday and so on, 12 Cut Steakhouse, MacArthur. Any legal, let me go back up to, because I just, I just lost Michelle's any legal aspects to be proactive, proactive, if you will, prepared to us or for us as leaders. What are the legal implications to making sure we're able to go forward and have what I consider in basketball, the hang time to be able to make, make that three pointer or that basket? Panel?
I think that's a great point. We were talking yesterday about the importance of mitigating risk. And so I think as we emerge from this crisis, you want to call your CPA, if you don't have one, maybe you want to call Doug, your banker, your business consultant, your attorney, and make sure that you're adhering to what the typical business is doing. And I think that we're going to offer some aids that might help in that area as well, that Gerald and Bill are going to talk about later on.
Okay, great, great. So if we, and for sake of time, basically, let's move to the next very, very important pillar. Beyond evaluation, the next phase that we're going to look at basically is developing a recovery plan. Okay, having all, having completed all the preliminary preliminary requirements, if you will, knowing what the monster looks like, so we can define the turbulence or the forces that are going to impact our company. And of course, identifying, you know, what you're going to do and responding to that. And the also evaluation of the the health of your company going forward. So in this particular case, we're going to look at and respond to development of a recovery plan to best leverage your resources. And of course, to do that, you have to be able to define what resources you need in the immediacy. And also what resources you're going to need for the journey. Okay, so that's very key and very important. So let me ask, let me ask the panel very briefly to respond to that. Among the resources, we know capital is very, very important for our survival. But what other types of things might you panel consider and like to respond to with regard to making certain your republic, your recovery plan is solid?
I might draw an analogy to riding a two wheeled vehicle, whether it's a bicycle or motorcycle. When you're straight away, anybody can go quick and be fine, but it's in the turns. Which is what we're into right now. We're in a change in the turn. And there's a process you follow, or you recommend it anyway, is to slow, look, lean and roll. And what that means is as you're coming up to the point of change, you have to slow down. So slow in this case might be maintain essential expenses, relationships, probably decrease discretionary spending. But increase awareness. And so you're not going so fast you can't see ahead, which gets us into look. Want to be forward looking. And realize we're going to exit this curve. We gotta be looking for that exit point.
Okay, go ahead, please.
And choose the best path forward.
Okay, well, spoken by, spoken by a colleague biker, you can tell when bikers are describing things philosophically because those are the rules that apply to motorcycling and Doug and I are very, very avid to engage in that particular area. Let's turn it over to any of the panel's questions. Let me take a look here with item for developing a recovery plan. Anyone have a question in particular with regard to the kinds of things you'd like to include in this plan? Please submit them into in the chat room as well, too. Let me ask the panelists, let me ask Jim and Doug and so forth, if you have any ideas with regard to how strong and how sustainable the recovery plan should be and what you should take into account?
Yeah, let me respond to that real quick. So before we develop your recovery plan, and you do need to have an understanding and develop and do the evaluation. And unless you have really completed those, then it's premature to develop your recovery plan. But once you get that understanding and that evaluation in place, then it's really a matter of putting it all together. Kind of like working a jigsaw puzzle, how do the pieces fit together? And then laying it out, understanding that there are some unknowns, many unknowns that may still exist. And so maintaining agility in that plan, and this is not just a financial plan, it's an execution plan, all four areas of maps. Doing, learning and reevaluating. And so that that recovery plan needs to contain flexibility. Don't, don't start pouring concrete. Chances are you'll be testing a lot of hypotheses. That may or may not work out, learn from those in a job, your recovery plan. But ultimately, you'll find things that work and then you has those new processes throughout your company.
Okay, a quick comment from Mr. Talarico.
Yeah, so two things I would add to that, I think they were both good comments, is communications is really important through this and not only from the top down, from bottom and not only from the top down, from bottom up. So you really want to know what's going on. And front of mind for me in terms of reallocating resources, I think it's very important to make sure that you continue to deliver customer service. So I'd be very sensitive to that.
Okay, great, thank you. See, Michelle MacArthur has a question for us, if I have that correctly voiced. You can go either side. Okay, that was more of a comment, so let me go to another question and we'll move on to the next topic. And again, this is a reading, a visual test for me basically, because this looks like really fine print, so bear with me, everyone.
Gerald, while you're looking at those, from a leadership perspective, it's going to take more of an innovative logic or innovation type logic than a management type logic. You know, this is not a management task so much as it's innovating to, to the new normal.
Okay, great, thank you. I would add to that as well, too. Some of you are familiar with or need to become familiar with who run companies, the whole, the concept around scenario planning. I would strongly recommend that you become proficient and aware and knowledgeable of that because there's too much, there's too much practice in executive leadership and also in management in general to just go through a plan and identify and develop a plan that has only one, one pathway, if you will. Okay, you're going to be challenged as leaders and as owners of companies to define your next steps based upon a particular scenario or how things happen to be at the present time. So you're going to be constantly adjusting that, that vector going forward and also your journey and the path that you take to get to that, that, the end of this particular period of time in our lives, so to speak. So scenario planning is basically, for some of you who have not been exposed to that, is where you have options. You know, if the economy is this way and COVID is how this present, very present in our lives, what do we do and how do we get through this with this particular scenario? And then of course, scenario B and C and so forth with regard to your planning. So make certain that you don't just define one path, because very, very likely and high probability that that path is going to be, I'm going to say pinged, but that path is going to have to deviate. You're going to have to choose another path that you'll take in order to get to the next stage, if you will, in project management terms, okay? In project management terms of going about it in that fashion. Hey, review, the next area we want to get into, and thank you for your questions. And again, we have a good number of them we weren't able to get to, so we apologize for not being able to respond to all of those. But review and invent your business model. Everybody on the call, I think, I believe, very strongly understands what a business model consists of. And that's your, on the front end, for example, I call it IPO. It's not IPO in a financial term, but it's an acronym that I've grown accustomed to, where you have input processes and then you have the process that converts what you have as resources and people and capital. You process that in the middle, and that's the P of the IPO, to create value. Value for your customers, value for your clients, value to people who are looking forward to the products and services that you offer. And then, of course, offering that basically, or the, the development of, of output that you provide for your clients and your customers and people who are expecting you to serve them as well, too. So what would the panel, how would you respond to reinventing your business model? And very, very briefly, because we're backing up on time here, how would you reinvent your business model for the future?
Gerald, so I'd like to start off, you know, I often talk about short-term solutions, intermediate-term solutions and long-term solutions. So in terms of short-term solutions, we really talked about that, you know, being focused on your employees, your customers, your suppliers. And, and again, I want to mention the idea of mitigating risk. I think that's important to do throughout the process. Intermediate term, you may see some trends emerging, so you may want to tweak your strategic focus, reallocate some of your resources. I always like to double check where I am with respect to my budget and my break even. And I know Jim, like me, can probably do break even in his sleep. Longer term, how are things going to impact us with respect to social distancing? With respect to working from home? With respect to manufacturing coming back to the US? So I think you need to look at all three.
Thank you. We have time just for one further response and then we need to move forward for sake of time here and just maintain the schedule.
Sure, a quick thought on this. And so, you know, this is a disruption and there's two options that as an organizational leader you have. You can choose to A, do nothing, or you can B, choose to do something. And I think we, we got to look at doing something and the question becomes, what is that something? Keep in mind that this disruption is not only affecting you, it's affecting your competitors just as much as you. You're in the same, same ocean. And it's also affecting your customers and your prospects. And so your customers and prospects, it's no longer business as usual and they're looking for solutions. And what a great time for you to be there to help them. So it's not, we, we have this saying that there may be bad times, but there's never a bad time to be the strongest you can be. And so how can you adjust and adapt what you're doing to do better than your competitors? Throughout this storm, some of your competitors may ultimately fade away. This is an opportunity for you to pick up market share. This is an opportunity for you to take advantage of this disruption that's going on. It can be a threat to your business, but it can be a huge opportunity as well. And so I think taking a very active role to reassess what your opportunities are, what are your strengths? How can you put those pieces back together to really turn this into a growth opportunity? And again, reassessing where you are at all times, but I see this as a huge opportunity. Take your foot off the brake and put, put your foot on the accelerator.
Absolutely, thank you. We have, and NASA has an experience or an expression, if you will, that all of you have heard basically, where you get impatient to, you got everything done, you understand what your succession plan is with regard to surviving this, this era that we happen to be in or this, this economy we happen to be in. And the, the people at the controls, for example, in the control room, would get very antsy because the clock is ticking and they're about to launch and they, they explain and say, you know, this light, let's light this candle. Let's get this thing going, so to speak. And you can sense the impatience of moving forward. However, keep in mind, basically, there's a quote that I picked specifically for this, this event. And keep in mind that it's rarely for lack of smarts or vision with regard to executing your plan. It's rarely for lack of smarts or vision. Most successful CEOs stumble because of one simple, very simple fatal shortcut. That brings us into the last part, our categories as well, too. Wow, okay, something, thanks for the, the visual effects, but Jan, I don't know what happened, but thank you for that. Execution, execution and execution, the key variable of all the five areas that we've spoken about is extremely important going forward with your company. As you set the compass, now you have all the resources, you've done the scenario planning, you know what your business capacity happens to be. You understand how healthy your company is and that it can make the journey and arrive at the intended destination. So setting your compass and section for the journey ahead, extremely and very important. And that quote that I just shared with you is from a very popular book about the year, I think they came out 1999 era, 1999, 1998 era, by a gentleman we have and we're very familiar with here, Ram Charan, who happens to be a Tex, in Texas or lives in Texas predominantly, and also Larry Bossidy, who's a former CEO of a major corporation down in Austin. And execution, of course, being the discipline of getting things done was the title of that book. And I think by today's standards, it's still, still very classic, okay? So going forward, then execution being very important, let me share with you what we've attempted to address in very brief time that we've had with you. To summarize, understanding the nature of the turbulence and disruption, make sure you have a clear understanding of what this, this beast, as I call it, and I don't mean that in a negative term, but what do you have to overcome? Okay, with regard to your business staying, staying active. And also evaluating the health and well-being of the company, I mentioned that several times. A recovery plan that works quite well for you in terms of identifying, I just lost my screen. Okay, identifying the best leverage that you can apply to the resources you have at your disposal, including people, processes, capital, everything you have to invest in creating a product that has very considerable, I should say, value for your clients and also your customers. Reinventing your business, and always remember, set your compass and section for the destination. However, do realize that the winds will change as you transition through this particular journey. So keep in mind that there are scenarios, but always be ready for scenario B, scenario C, as I mentioned earlier, in terms of, you know, your course correction, if you will. You make, you will have to make a lot of course corrections throughout this, this timeframe. So I leave you with one, a quote that Bill shared with us earlier. I've referred to it and alluded to it several times. And that's one of the most profound quotations from the great Albert Einstein, is that we cannot solve today's problems using the same level of thinking, mental models, if you will, that created them. So keep, stay open, stay open, stay creative, allow yourselves alternatives. Don't get caught up in just having to have that one specific decision and that, that's it, and locking yourself to that decision because I guarantee you, the turbulence created in a perfect storm will take you off in a different direction and you're going to have to know that going forward. So thank you very much for joining us and we apologize for not being able to get to all of your, your questions going forward, which have been brilliant for us. And so we'll, we'll compile these and try to get some information off to you going into the future as we can. And certainly come, you know, get on our website, get on Success North Dallas website and you'll probably find a lot of these topics coming up as we continue to navigate our way through this storm. Contact information, you know, you have before you right now for all, all five of us, all four of us, I'm sorry. Well, I say five, if you include Bill Wallace, you know how to reach him. So all four of us, myself and also the panelists, I want to thank the panelists again for your participation and contributing value, if you will, to how to navigate through this storm and using the very best resources and decision-making processes we have. So I would turn this now back over to Dr. Wallace.
Well, I want to thank the panelists and I especially want to thank Dr. Turner for putting this together. And as a wrap, to the panelists, any last comments, takeaway, give back, a couple of minutes each? Jim Talarico, why don't we start with you?
Yeah, absolutely. So I had two thoughts I wanted to add. You know, Eisenhower said that plans are worthless, but planning is invaluable. And I think planning is something that we have to keep in mind. That's one thing that I'm focusing more on this, during this crisis. And another thing is we want to keep our employees front of mind. I'd offer some, I'd set some goals and objectives and offer some incentives so that when this is all through, you're rewarding your employees for helping you through the crisis.
Excellent. Jim Ratchford?
Yeah, good discussion. One, one thought I would add, the title of the perfect storm, you know, the story has to do with the crew of a ship out in the storm. And they're, they're in survival mode, but they're largely on their own, having to solve it by themselves. And one of the advantages that most businesses have here is that you're not really in that situation, that there are resources available to help you, to guide you, to help you through that creativity and that assessment that you may need to reset your compass and sextant. And so reach out and tap into those resources to help you get through this. You are not alone.
Dr.? Doug?
Yeah, I would suggest that in terms of executing and moving forward, perhaps the best compass is going to be your established goals, priorities and values. Basically, your moral reasoning. Those things shouldn't change, no matter what state is, so they can help you navigate forward as other events iterate, change, pivot, whatever. But the goals, priorities and values should remain the same.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Turner?
Yeah, I think-
Put a ribbon around this for us.
Okay, I think I've shared probably more than a lot of folks would want to hear. But again, I can't stress enough the value, in particular, I appreciate Jim Ratchford's commentary around the network, if you will, the network of resources and people and realizing it takes, that foundation in execution is in fact having the right people to help you going forward. So don't be timid or shy about engaging other people in, in your journey. Quite frankly, you need what we call in the intelligence community in general, command, control, communication, well, intelligence, surveillance and, and resolve and so forth going forward. You need some things basically to help you navigate those waters. And you won't necessarily have all the information available to yourself, if you will, to navigate. So you're going to have to reach out to some folks and, and they're going to reach out to you. So I believe, quite frankly, we're going to become a closer society as a result of this experience. It's teaching us a lot about values. I see some of the food lines, for example, that people are in for the very first time in their lives. And as some of you may have, may know, not just, not just firsthand, but a lot of folks literally would never have expected or anticipated this, this black swan that swooped down upon us, if you will, and created these current, these current times. So make certain that, you know, when you get back out, make sure you get back out and work and connect and engage with people and network to the max, which is what we do in networks and Success North Dallas very, very, very well. So thank all of you for joining us. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Wallace. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Gerald. Thank you, panel, Jim, Doug, Jim. And thank you, Jan Clodner, for working behind the scenes with all of our audio, video and other things. I want to address a few things very quickly, but be sure you stay around for the networking because we've got some of the questions in the chat and we'll try to address there. We'll throw it open with the open mic. Stick around for that, it'll be invaluable. Upcoming meetings, 20th, Daniel Moon, the evolution of an entrepreneurial family. Now, this is the Moon family, David, Daniel and Sam, and Sam Moons. But what you all don't know, and some do, is that the Renaissance Hotel at Legacy West is theirs. The New Hilton opening at Stonebriar Mall is theirs. They're a multifaceted entrepreneurial company with an incredible story to tell. And later in the summer, we will, they will be hosting us, Success North Dallas, for a happy hour. That Samuel, David and Daniel will be opening, hosting us for a happy hour at their Coyote Ridge Golf Club and Development. So I'm looking forward to that. And I want to thank S and D member, Jeanne Culver, CEO of Culver Public Relations, for setting this up and making this happen. And Jeanne, we really appreciate you. Also, we will continue the town hall meetings. They will be continued virtually. And when I say virtually, we're going to do one a month or try to, we're going to try to make it something that's highly topical, critical issue to address at each one. So ideas, input on that would be greatly appreciated. We will continue our regular Success North Dallas meetings. The May 20th meeting, there's a small chance we could have a small contingent in person. I don't think so, but I'm pretty confident that the June meeting will be back to some semblance of normal. But in the interim, as we're coming back, we will do those virtually as well. So moving right along, we always announce this one thing, May the first, first Friday. Randy, what's our book?
We've got two books. Yeah, we've got two books on May 1. Thanks for asking, Bill. The Innovation Stack, which is Building an Unbeatable Business, One Crazy Idea at a Time, by Jim McKelby, who co-founded Square with Jack Dorsey. And the other book is The Catalyst, How to Change Anyone's Mind by Jonah Berger. Both very good books and the synopsis handouts are available to download, so you can follow along with them. Bill, thank you. That's this Friday morning, 7:30 in the morning, first Friday, book synopsis.
Going into the 23rd year, it's normally held at the Park City Club and they're doing it virtually now. But I can assure you, this meeting is one of the best uses of your time every month that you could possibly find. It is just unbelievable, the information that went out of it. And something a little different, since we're not charging as we're going through this virtual time, if you would like to make a donation to Success North Dallas, go to our website's landing page, just click on become a member, you'll find a donate link with a blank amount. Anything you choose, zero, suggested might be 20, but whatever, whatever works for you. As we go through these times, we're all in a state of flux and state of change. And if you really, really enjoyed the town hall meeting today, we encourage- we encourage you to join Success North Dallas. Daniel's are $345, and that includes 12 fantastic meetings, a continental buffet, the best of the best and speakers from all over the world. Your first time guests are always welcome and free. And you will build meaningful relationships. And when I say meaningful relationships, I mean the relationships that lost, launched, launched 97 companies, 1,000 jobs, seven first annual entrepreneurs of the year. It's $345 a year. We don't nickel and dime, that's the total cost. And it's simple. If you join today or join this week, whatever, we will give you an extra two months on the membership as we're going through these times. A member for June of 2021, the same additional two month consideration we give to our regular members. And it's simple, just go to become a member on the top right-hand portion of our website, click on it, and the prompts will carry you straight through. It's simple, it's fun, and we would love to welcome you into the Success North Dallas family. So with that, we're looking forward to seeing you all, May 20th, virtually. We'll kick it off at 7:00 AM, and it'll go till 9:00. There'll be some networking at the beginning, the networking after the meeting. And I say virtually, or maybe even a little bit in person. And please remember, bring a guest or two. So thank you for coming. And in closing, may you do what you love to do with people you love to do it with on purpose. God bless and God speed. Thank you for coming. Now we have some virtual networking, we're going to open up all the mics. And so who's out there, who has something to say?
One more thing before we close, the meeting has been recorded, and it will be sent out to everybody.
Another first.
Another second.
Second, we did last time.
Very good. Thank all of you for being here.
I saw, I saw an interesting question, and it's something I want to, I want to pose. And that question is, what of liability? That question is, if, say, the country club or a club or a facility is supposed to meet, and they're not enforcing social distancing, do they have a liability? Is that an issue that we need to be cognizant of and careful as we go through additional meetings?
I think that's a great question. And I always say I don't practice tax, I don't practice law. And I think that what people need to do is they need to talk to their attorney about how much responsibility they have for things like that.
Yeah, I would think, I would think it's almost like a user agreement. If you walk in the door, you're kind of accepting the user agreement, you're taking the risk.
I saw a news report, I believe Congress was actually planning to consider that in their next legislation.
Good question, absolutely.
It's a very good question, but I'm going to-
I think it would be extremely difficult to tie back into who contaminated who and when, when there's a 14-day lag period for symptoms to show up. So I think the, anybody can sue anybody for anything at any time, but I'm not sure it would be effective to make it stick.
Yeah, I want to build on Peter's- Yeah, I want to build on Peter's comment as well, too, that one of the greatest problems we've had with the modeling and the simulation and the transmission vector that we were, we've been working on the last few months has been the identification, and several have mentioned this already, identification of those who are carriers. News has been in the media late around even animals. I think the Bronx Zoo, for example, has a tiger, a clan of tigers, if you will, there that has contracted the disease. A pet dog, for example, was apparently contracted it. And other, other situations have surfaced, however. But the things that, in answer to that question with the guard to liability, and of course, Jim Talarico's comment about attorney, a lot of that's going to depend upon how the government looks at those who are pre-symptomatic and asymptomatic. Those have been variables we've not been able to define adequately. You know, you can't just look at someone and determine they're, they're sick or that they have that, because we're still in flu season. People still have runny noses and they're coughing and sneezing and so forth. But the asymptomatics and also the pre-symptomatics who are, can be tested at one time and show that they don't have the virus, even though the virus is incubating in their bodies. And eventually they find out that they've been carrying it. So that's going to be a difficult thing to respond to, but the advice I think is well given.
Yeah, I think in the long term, one of the things that I think is interesting is, are, is the insurance industry going to respond to this in any way? And come up with a product to reduce companies' liabilities?
There's a raging war, there's a raging war going on in the cybersecurity world regarding privacy, privacy issues. And these are very, very large issues that are being addressed on a global basis. And it's going to be really interesting to watch. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest we have much risk.
Gerald, I have a question.
Yes, Randy.
This is partly philosophical. Nicholas Nassim Taleb, who wrote The Black Swan, which is a book that I presented a few years ago, he says that this pandemic is not a black swan. He says that there were warnings and we ignored the warnings. It was expected, but we chose to ignore the warnings. Bill Gates gave a TED Talk about three or four years ago, saying a pandemic is coming. So maybe the black swan is our own black swan of not being ready to respond, but the warnings were there. Any thoughts about that comment?
Absolutely, thank you. Very, very well, an excellent point, Randy, for the most part. And in risk management, to respond to your, your point, there are three areas of things that we juggle with regard to whether something is considered to be a true black swan event or not. And that is that, you know, there are things that we know that we can predict upon based upon, as Einstein said, our old knowledge base, you know, all the things we have that seem like they apply, if you will, to this particular situation. And then there are those unknown things that are part of our society that we know that are out there, for example, that we just don't have access to, or we don't know the right person to talk with. And the third, the third leg on that stool are the unknowables, the unknowables. And right now, this particular pandemic relates to those things that we, we don't know yet. They're unknowable now because we have no basis for testing. And I don't mean the testing that's taking place with regard to the pandemic, but there are just some things that are natural events, a natural occurrence is natural events, that we don't yet have our arms around, and they're probably too big for us to really appreciate. Did I answer your, did I answer that, Randy, for you?
No, I think so. I just, I just think we really ignored the warnings.
Well, I got data, and I've got redacted and all kinds of other data in my files that some of, most of which I can't share because of the nature of our research. But just to give people a better perspective, this virus didn't just break out in December. Basically, there's evidence to support that it was around in November, probably around Thanksgiving time, you know, for our country's, our country's celebration. And also, there's still some question as to whether or not the laboratory that's been pointed out several times in a city within China might have been working on that to try to find, to discover, if you will, some vaccines that might apply to something this dangerous and that it might have left the barn, if you will, without anybody knowing about it as well, too. So there, there are a lot of things that, it was known before. It was, we knew about it. My participation on this committee was January 3rd of this year. And by that time, the evidence was already there. We also knew that just closing down the borders from China, closing travel, if you will, from China was necessary but not sufficient. We have in our model, basically, there were, traffic was leaving China in December. And of course, hitching a ride was COVID-19 with all the travel that was leaving. And we described at that time and identified at least 50 other countries that already had it visiting the country. And you can see by virtue of the Johns Hopkins map, the heat map, that it spread that way predominantly because, because the travel had been going on and that virus had been traveling the entire month of December, back home to the respective countries. So you're right, you're absolutely right, Randy. The evidence was there, taking the early, or taking advantage of it early. And there were signs, there were warnings also. I do know that there were warnings. I know factually that there were warnings that were presented to the administration. And for any variety of reasons, that part of the black swan, basically around people not being able to receive or not being able to accept the magnitude of this problem, I think intervened. And I won't go into any of the psychology behind that because I'm not qualified.
Hey, Bill, Ron Lusk, I've got one comment everyone to think about. The, the elephant in the room in these stimulus packages is the debt forgiveness income tax impact. And I think all of our voices matter. And I, and I suspect that no one is really focused on that issue. That could be what ultimately economically knocks everyone out. People need to be thinking about that aspect.
One point.
Interesting, interesting. Gary Lawson, you usually have something to say. You're muted.
Okay, it took a second to get the, the mouse to move. It's, it's not stimulated enough this morning. No, my comments now are that unfortunately, a lot of the legal problems people are facing, like their lease terms and provisions in agreements and force majeure, are the result of frankly, not talking to lawyers, fear of talking to lawyers. Lawyers are too expensive. And so those contracts that people have in place have very bad provisions. The other thing, we just recently settled a lawsuit, asked a, the other side if they wanted to arbitrate and then put in the cost of the arbitration. And said, look, we all have to focus on much more important things than lawyers making money and litigation. And let's really try to reach an agreement and see if we can't reach it with, even without the, the wonderful arbitrator. And we did. People need to focus on really what is important. It is unfortunate, I have clients with landlords that are being ridiculous when their businesses have zero income. So it really would be helpful if everybody in the world, and I realize it's, it's all interconnected. If a landlord doesn't get rent, the landlord can't pay its employees. But there's got to be a real effort to solve problems and, and put as many of these insignificant ones behind this as humanly possible.
Can I, can I, just for the purpose of stimulating the conversation, play devil's advocate here?
Please.
When you all say that there was warnings and things like that, you know, I think what we have to look at is hindsight is always 2020. And I think that you could look at any catastrophe out there. I mean, 9/11, they say there were warnings. Just about every one of them had warnings that nobody paid attention to. But again, hindsight is 2020, and it's easy to look back and say should have, could have, would have. But I mean, I think, I think if you take that definition, and maybe I'm wrong, but there's, there's no such thing as a black swan then. Because I think every black swan had some warnings out there. Well, I mean, is that a logical assumption or?
No, excellent point, and thank you for bringing that up. I'd like to share a perspective with you, and that's a very good, very good point. One of the things, the alarm bell that went off, the klaxon that was sounding very loudly several months back, basically, was the speed with which this virus spread and the transmissibility. And that made it something enough to be labeled in the world of infectious diseases, pandemics and so forth, that it was spreading faster than anything before, anything preceding. Even the Spanish flu, for example, in 1918, or the 14th century black plague. It's, it's speed of transition was of concern, and no one was able, no one perceived that there was a way to get their arms around it. So that, that placed it in a category that the World Health Organization eventually also realized that it's called the novel virus for a reason. It's called the novel virus. It doesn't have any predecessors. Even SARS in 2002, because this is a SARS type of a coronavirus. But the differences are so vast, that the SARS in 2002, 2003 was nowhere as profuse, if you will, and nowhere as hungry to spread as fast. It was, the shock was how fast this thing was spreading. And when we saw it on the Johns Hopkins map, going to some of the nations that we had already discovered that had an acceleration of cases, we were concerned about not only China's travel being concerned as being a vector for transmission, but also all the other, we defined at least about 50 other nations where traffic was coming-
Jason Lockhart.
Was, was other travels, if you will, other nations that were traveling to the US that also had the virus also, you know, escalating in their own countries. So to your, to your point, the novel part of this disease is what was so shocking, what was so shocking. But you're right, you're absolutely right, Terry. Thank you for sharing. Randy?
Gerald, what I would say is, there are plenty of things about this virus that we were not prepared for. But Hans Rosling wrote a book, Factfulness, in which he said the six great dangers to planet Earth, one of the six is a global pandemic. And there are things that we could have done to prepare for a global pandemic that we did not do, that would have possibly slowed down the death rate. And, and so what I would say to Terry is, Terry, you're right. We can't know what the next catastrophe will be. But the books I've read say, we've got to get better at preparing for the category of catastrophe, put some money in and planning in, so that when it comes, we've got some things in place. And I think that's where we blew it on this.
Yep. I agree, Randy. And thank you for that, because what you triggered is a thought in my mind. Emergency preparedness, as an Eagle Scout, was something that I, that was one of the, my favorite badge, basically, back in the day. And that's one, that's one of the three areas that we didn't focus on this time around. I mentioned that two areas, of course, being disaster recovery and business continuity. But at the front of that, Randy just alluded to, emergency preparedness. And having a plan in place or a disaster recovery emergency plan that will kick in, you know, when the alarm goes off, basically, it'll kick in. And we'll already have steps, procedures, accountability, responsibility, who you talk with, who does what. There had, there were reports and there were tests. As a matter of fact, I can share one with you right now. Last year, there was an exercise launched among the major agencies, Health and Human Services, CDC, several others as well, too, where they went through a simulation, if you will, of a pandemic. This was in 19, in 2019. Okay, and there were, there were exercises before that, or called tabletop exercises, where, and that was handed off from the previous administration to the current administration. But, you know, again, the emergency prep is only as good as people responding to it and taking it seriously. So to Randy's point, there, there are things you could do upfront. And not doing that, the consequences of which we're living through right now.
Yeah, I think one of the other things that was not, was not entered at all is the actions of China through this whole thing.
Absolutely.
And you know, I mean, what, we don't really know what was going on there. And they're not even letting us in to study the disease or anything. So, you know, the Chinese, to put it lightly, have not been real cooperative. And, and we still don't know what exactly is going on and where exactly this virus started. I don't know what any of your thoughts are in terms of relations with China. I'm just wondering what everybody else's thoughts are on that.
Yeah, there's, there's an attempt to cover, we do know that there was an attempt to cover the embarrassment, and China did not even know, apparently, they did not realize, apparently come to, it came to their surprise by a doctor who passed away on the 31st of December, who was trying to warn the entire country and was since taken to jail and told, he was muted, if you will, told not to spread it any further. And he eventually succumbed to the disease, trying to tell the government this was going on. Okay, so that type of people politic intervened there. And then eventually became an embarrassment to China. And there were some things that China was not, not immediately disclosed, if you will. And you almost had to pull teeth to get the information out. Today, today is past, is past history. We have people inside some of our agencies that we know of and some not, that have gathered the information and so forth. But again, the horse has left the barn. So things could have, would have, should have, to your point, Terry. You know, we're beyond that point.
Lucinda, Lucinda, you were trying to get in there a minute ago. Was it Lucinda? Okay, moving right along.
There she is. No, that's not-
This is-
Jessica.
Yeah, I have, to Terry's point, I think-
Yeah, I have to Terry's point, I think, should have, could have, would have, looking back, there's a lot of measures that have been taken and these warning signs that were given to the government and everything. But I think for the general public, it's really hard. I mean, the last pandemic was 1918, right? And so a lot of us have never experienced anything like it. And had the government taken extreme course of action, even if we had prepared for a pandemic, that the general public wouldn't understand why we're taking the actions that were conceptualized, the impact that this virus could have had. I mean, look at the economic impact on all of these small businesses, which is 90% of the people here today, that there would be, I mean, now there's rioting starting, let us go back to work, let us, and the numbers are supporting the fact that we need to shut down and shelter in place. But if we didn't even have those numbers and it was all in prevention, I think it would be so hard for the general public to conceptualize why we're doing what we're doing. And there would be such a big outcry for, you know, just more rioting in a sense of let us, let us go back to work. This is a free country, let us make our own choices. And they wouldn't conceptually understand why the government is doing what they're doing.
Jessica makes excellent point, excellent point, because you can be prepared from an institutional perspective, basically. But to Jessica's point, we as a culture and as a civilization and also as a nation, we're not prepared for. So there were not even mechanisms in place for us to respond accordingly as well too. Excellent points, Jessica.
Randy, you have your hand up. You're muted. You're not, you're not muted and we cannot hear you.
Okay, if Randy doesn't make it, Jim Talarico will want to do.
Yeah, I have a comment and I guess a question for you Gerald, and it really ties into the last couple of comments. I used to be a stockbroker and one of the things about the market was people would forget the things that got them into a crisis before and go ahead and and repeat the same bad behavior. And my question to you is that with AI, do you think as a cultural or as a human race will be smarter and be able to identify those things that we overlook because they're not in the front of our mind?
That, that excellent point, because it triggered another thought in my mind where AI is used and has been used. One of the points that in response to your question, I think AI and the Internet of Things and a lot of the technologies that are emerging as a result of the fourth industrial, industrial revolution have every, every reason to, we have every reason to be confident that that the intervention of those technologies into any particular crisis would be phenomenal and also would be of value to us. One of the things that, and I mentioned South Korea for a reason, South Korea was one of the first nations, of course, and they don't have the population we have, but they were one of the first actually to utilize technology, technology, AI, and also they use some other technologies that we in the United States would have difficulty with from a, from a privacy standpoint, okay? There are some things that they use to track people's cell phones in terms of where they were at any given time and other people that were in that same store at that time. So they use technology and AI to identify carriers, whether they were, whether they were asymptomatic or presymptomatic. And there's a, there's a country, a country, I'm sorry, Blue Dot, there's a company up in Canada that is probably in the world of the very best by a Dr. Khan. And Dr. Khan's company, Blue Dot, has developed one of the most powerful, powerful AI analytible tools for identifying these types of things when they break out for the most part. Unfortunately, they're, they had no customers in the United States, but they were also able to very adequately identify what kinds of things need to be done to do the track, the tracing, if you will. Where was, where's that person been, who was there with them? To the point that I think in, I think in Hong Kong, they were able to identify and to zero in on the transmission occurring when a waitress was handing, one of the customers was asking for salt, a salt shaker, and one of the waitresses basically handed them a salt shaker and the technology allowed them to pinpoint that transmission. So AI has a tremendous part in solving these particular issues.
Throwing something out, we hear talk of a vaccine, we hear talk of some billionaires coming together and some scientists coming together for a cure, all of this, or vaccine, not a cure. The potential of having a vaccine and when could that possibly occur? And secondly, with the way strains mutate, would a vaccine be meaningful at all as strains are mutating?
Excellent point and your point about, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond in reverse. The mutation is predominantly why it's so difficult to have the same flu shot that we get every year, for those of us who participate in that process, always has, it always changes predominantly because the influenza, you know, that causes our seasonal flu or contributes to it, is always mutating. And that also is the fact with with COVID-19, it is, and it does mutate. So that by the time the vaccine is delivered, it may not very well be able to respond, I'm sorry, act upon the, the strain that was operative at that time. So I think we're going to end up having something similar to the influenza treatment and the influenza shot and so forth going forward, because mutation is already taking place with regard to once the virus incubates inside the host, that does happen and does occur. And the, the question, there are 70 companies, 70 companies around the world, all chasing the, the golden vaccine for this particular bug, okay, 70 of them, using all variety of different methods and so forth. And that's how complex this COVID-19 is. So I still believe very strongly, as far as a vaccine to be available to cure. Vaccine means cure, of course, in this, in this case as well too, as it did in MARS, Ebola, what have you. I think we'll have treatments, treating the symptoms, those will come out a lot, I think, earlier than a vaccine per se. We will have one predominantly, but it may take a lot, a lot longer, even though there's been promises and excitement on the TV and the media and the radio and so forth, around us having a vaccine in the short term. And I heard something yesterday where a particular company had something, they repurposed a particular drug that they had. And repurposing a drug, I won't go, I won't, I won't dwell on the repurpose attempt, if you will, by our administration, where some people died taking advantage of something that was recommended. And it wasn't, it wasn't like alcohol or Lysol or trying to drink it or whatever, it wasn't that kind of thing. But to your point, that, yeah, that's one of the uncertainties. We don't know, this thing is so novel. We don't know that once it's in the body, if it, there are people that have been cured, not cured, I'm sorry, have been treated that are not testing as being positive for COVID, where COVID, the virus in and of itself internally is mutating to the point where it comes back to that person.
Okay, Doug, Doug Tove, and then Randy, Doug, you got your hand up.
Yeah, Dr. Turner, to your point about mutation, NPR reported this morning that the virus is no longer just respiratory. There's direct evidence that 30 and 40 year olds are incurring stroke caused by the virus.
Absolutely, excellent point. And that's, you know, when you watch TV, one of the things that points to that, an excellent point, Doug. I've been wondering for a long time, even though I think I knew the answer, why any major station and that you look at for your news, you notice the two basic criteria they post is how many cases and how many deaths. They don't post, you don't see posted in that little column or block on the right of the screen. You don't see the recovered, people who have recovered are being treated, have been treated successfully for that bug because there are after effects. There are things, other things that have damaged, people have developed heart conditions, developed kidney conditions. So to put, to see the recovery category, that's full of a lot of information, to your point, where people have developed other illnesses as a result of the treatment.
Our rotary lab had a doctor treating many patients. And one of the things to what Doug said with the stroke is that they have actually figured out that coronavirus now creates blood clotting. So they're giving a lot of people blood thinners. So that's a long term, they're dying, maybe recovered from coronavirus and the respiratory issues and then later die from blood clotting.
Excellent point, Jessica, excellent point. And that's, again, that's why we're still et cetera, the total number of deaths and treatment and cases and so forth keeps accelerating. But we really don't know the nature, this thing is really strange. It's really unique and very strange. So we don't know the effect of the disease being in the host and also what after effects. You know, on TV, for example, one of the things that I admire and observe, you'll see a particular, particular treatment or pill you can get at the pharmacy, and of course, it'll make you feel like you're flying like a bird and so on and so on. And then at the very end of that commercial, you hear a list of 10 to 12 different symptoms or problems that can occur as a result of you taking that drug. So you die of the cure or die of the cause.
Randy?
Thanks, Bill, just before I say what I was gonna say, I just want to say thanks to the team and of course, Doctor did a great job with this whole thing, so this is very informative. You said something earlier about your experience with C2ISR and command and control and all the rest of those stuff. I spent my entire career in the defense industry. And there are agencies all over the US, all over the world, just ours, whether they're collaborative or not, that are studying all kinds of threats, biological, chemical, military, all, all of these things. And what they're constantly trying to assess is the probability that any one of these could become a reality. Now, think of the complexity of how do you, we talked earlier about what we do in companies and how do we assess our position and looking at alternatives. How do you, you can't release all this information, well, we think there's a possibility here, we think there's a possibility here, nuclear weapons over here, blah, blah, blah. They release a lot of it to try to keep us as informed as possible. But they can't release even a percentage of it, because they would, first of all, people wouldn't believe them. Second of all, those who did would throw the nation into a panic. This is a really difficult problem to accurately assess all of the threats to the human race, the United States, our allies, the global, the world, and then decide which ones to work on potential solutions for. It is extremely complex problem.
Excellent point, Randy, and I want to build on your comments and I think you hit, hit the nail on the head. May, May 2018, we had one of those agencies through the National Security Council that was, that department was, it was dismantled, if you will, an agency that was totally responsible for tracking pandemics, biological hazards and so on and so on, working with the, the agencies, the agencies within the government that comply with the C4ISR type thing in those agencies with the military and so forth. So to your point, we have people all over the world that have an abundance of information. First of all, understanding which one is really risky and which one is not, that's a tremendous overtaking. So which one do you pick? And then which one do you respond to and so forth? So you're absolutely right on point.
And how do you alert people? Which one do you alert people to without sending the nation into a total panic? Because people, and then the one other point that I just wanted to make was, you talked about vaccines. Look at the movement against vaccines today. You know, when I was a kid, if they said you needed a vaccine, you got a vaccine. Today, people don't want them because of, someone said earlier, the side effects of all the drugs, the over the counter drugs and the vaccines. So people have become really, really skeptical, so it's damned if you do and damned if you don't.
Let me interject something, it's coming up on 10 o'clock right now. We said we were gonna go 20 minutes, we're 10 minutes over that already, which amazes me. But I can probably go on another 15 minutes if you all want to. This seems very good or we can just go and let it kind of play out. But it's entirely up to you. I think the information exchange has been phenomenal and I want to thank everybody. So hang in there if you can for another 15 minutes, we will end it in 15 minutes. But David, I believe you were trying to say something.
Because, probably because I'm very close to my family in Italy, I have the feeling that there is very little communication exchange, at least in a structured way, between different countries and different solutions and solutions and diagnosis and, and medical treatment possibilities. Information are arriving with a strange delay, if you want, as compared to what it could be considering the technology we have available, that everyone is working on their own solution without really any coordinations. And this creates even more chaos in my mind, because this blood thinner information is something that in Italy was probably known more than a week ago and is popping up slowly now in the US. I was wondering what the opinion of Gerald or one of the panelists is.
I would just, I would just attach a dot, 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 ergo, the complexity of this issue. And you've nailed it, an excellent point, if you will, and thank you for sharing that. Anybody else want to respond to it? I know some of the mechanics behind the, you know, what I've shared basically, but that's another very difficult area or task to, to manage going forward, you know, identifying it. And then every country does have, I mentioned 70 different attempts, if you will, to create a vaccine. A point made earlier was around us becoming vaccine intolerant in terms of that being a way of life. But I don't know, does anyone else have any experience you want to contribute?
I have a question, Dr. Turner, this is Michelle MacArthur.
Yes, Michelle.
You mentioned how with the underlining and it mutating into the system, which is all great aspects. And another head of my, hat of mine is in Chinese medicine, which I get on a lot of panels with some of the top leaders with the herbal medicines and everything. And being one with the double autoimmune myself, with one of the muscular dystrophies, with lupus. But seeing how the effects of vaccine, like was mentioned by Randy, what would you say about the herbal medicines and the different aspects with attacking the virus that you've heard of?
The term just escaped me that there are professionals that administer herbal treatments, you know, with regard to, you know, taking natural elements and so forth and trying to address particular diseases and illnesses and so forth. I think right now, I believe that a lot of the nations, in fact, and I think as David mentioned, a lot of the nations that are exploring possibilities around, you know, what, what can really treat the, the disease without creating, you know, side effects and without creating some alternative conditions that are not necessarily desirable by the host, but you know, you either live, there was an old commercial back in the day, basically, fram oil filter commercial, where it says, you can pay me now or you can pay me later, okay? And that with regard to the, the treatment, the appropriate treatment. I think herbal medicine is probably going to gain a lot of attention and a lot of notoriety in the next few months. That's just my opinion and also the opinion of my panel that I worked on. And there's, there's gonna be much more of a closer, there's gonna be a more closer, I should say, a lot closer, a lot closer investigation into all the kinds of treatments that are available, including the herbal. Herbal really doesn't get, I don't think, ample recognition as being a possible alternative, if you will, to treat. Homeopathic, is that the term I think that applies to that type of treatment?
No, it's more into the herbal medicines.
The herbal, okay.
Yeah, and some even with, it goes into the FDA and things that they're not allowing into the country that they do allow into Europe.
Okay, absolutely. Well, fortunately, unfortunately and unfortunately, my doctorate is in operations research and not in medicine, so I can't, I can't claim to have that type of knowledge and savvy. That's on my play grade, play, play and pay grade.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
From your insight, and then we'll get to you, Tom Allen. From your insight, just to, in a very quick format, address, do you have any insight to the FDA? Are we gonna see our drug approval process changed because of all that's going on here?
Quick answer and best answer I can give you, and I believe it has every basis in fact, is all of the major administration elements and activities, including FDA, CDC had some blunders in the beginning as well. Health and Human Services had some blunders as well. The agency, Homeland Security has some problems as well. Some of the exercises that exist before, some of you may have heard of a couple of these exercises that were taken to find the defects, if you will, in the process that kicked. of a couple of these exercises that were taken to find the defects, if you will, in the process that kicks in, or processes that kick in as a result of a pandemic or any kind of other major threat to the United States. And so you do have, some of you probably heard of the Crimson Contagion Project that was very well publicized. And that was the project that was the exercise from last year where all these, I think 15 different agencies were banded together to see how they would respond collectively. And some of the politic surfaced and some of the procedural problems surfaced. What I discovered in Puerto Rico when I was working there with the guard, helping them rebuild their infrastructure, was that a lot of people want to blame FEMA and a lot of people want to blame the US Army Corps of Engineers and so forth for the, what was perceived to be and dubbed a very unfortunate consequence of preparedness and interaction. They hadn't dealt with something of that nature and that magnitude before and worked together. This particular time calling FEMA and US, US Army Corps of Engineers created some issues as well too. So to your point, I believe a lot of the agencies, and to a previous question as well too, a lot of the agencies and the processes. You know, what's broken in a lot of areas, and I think all of the panelists will agree, basically, is not particularly the person that's in charge or responsible or accountable for an action or decision. Investigate the processes. Usually the processes will point you directly to the problem and execution in getting something done and being able to administer. And of course, there's some agencies that don't want to talk to others and some to protect their own intelligence and information we have. And we're not going to give it, hand it over to you because of a variety of reasons. So FDA, a variety of other agencies are going to have to change, but we've seen this, we've been to this rodeo before. MERS, SARS, H1N1, we've seen this before, basically, where the agencies, the communicability or communication and, and interaction, interoperation, all for one purpose breaks down. So I don't know how best to respond to that.
Tom Allen, you're next, and then Gary Lawson.
Well, we talked about this a minute ago, but I heard news that people by and large did not get a flu shot and that they're kind of hoping they will this fall to sort of reduce the totality of the death rate because of the flu and the COVID-19. So what do you think about that? Is that true or don't know or?
All of the above, very briefly, I'll respond, all of the above. I have a condition, I will share with those online, it's not an embarrassing condition, but one of the ways my condition was improved and almost eliminated, it was a cancer condition predominantly, was in building the immune system. Okay, building the immune system up, and that's what these treatments are attempting to do, is having the immune system fight the bug. Okay, and I was able to greatly reduce mine. I was at high-risk cancer and I'm down to a very, 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 very low, almost untraceable level and so forth, working with my immune system. But you have to be careful of tampering with the immune system, but because there, there's a shock doctrine, serotonin shock, I can't remember call the exact name, where if your immune system is programmed to do something differently than what it is currently programmed to do in your body, it can do some damage to some of the other areas that it's designated, that it's supposed to protect. So you have to be very, very careful dealing with the immune system and the T cells that are part of the protein element that's a major contributor, if you will, to the illness. That's why this is so complex because everybody doesn't respond to that same pill, that same drug, that same treatment or that same cure or vaccine. So. Yes.
Yeah, let me, let me add something. The FDA, like many of our government agencies, is a police agency. Let's not forget, police are there to protect us from evildoers. Okay, and there are evildoers who would propose medical devices and medical treatments that are untested, unfounded or flat terrible. But because they are a police agency, because the mental setting to go into working at a police agency is that everybody is bad, they just have to find out who is the bad person and how bad they are. There really has to be a change of mental attitude now by the FDA. I've worked with medical device manufacturers for, for quite a number of years. And you have to prove that you're innocent. You have to prove that the device or the chemical doesn't cause danger. Well, at this point in time, that agency needs to reevaluate the risk. If there were 50 airplanes or there were 500 airplanes on 9/11 that had to be grounded, the traffic controllers had to take a very different approach to getting those planes safely on the ground. The spacing, the distance, the, all of those rules have to be modified. And while many government agencies are responding more rapidly, this is an agency that really is quite having great difficulty in responding more rapidly. They need to be pushed by the people in government, they need to be pushed by politicians, they need to be pushed by civilians who are demanding that they lighten up. But we can't have them go away either. If they go away, we will see death tolls that will be astronomical and shocking and horrifying. So there's a balancing act. They just need to refine their game right now.
As Einstein said, new thinking, new thinking. All of them need new thinking. Yes.
So to Gary's point and to Dr. Turner, so again, talking to another doctor that was treating COVID patients, he was saying that the death toll rate of people that put on ventilators was extremely high. When you put them on a ventilator, I can't remember the number, like 80% of the people don't come off. And he said that, you know, initially they were putting people on ventilators almost illegally and have now since rolled back that process and just done supplemental oxygen. And if you invert the patient and. Capacity, I went through an unfortunate incident with my brother who ended up needing to, to be on a bed that rotated that would prone him, I guess is the word, automatically so that nurses didn't have to come and change him every 10, 15 minutes or whatever. But the doctor said that they have those beds available, but they're $100,000 a month to rent that type of bed. Is there anything, I mean, that's crazy. I mean, $100,000 to rent a bed like that? If that's gonna be able to treat this illness better than a ventilator with just supplemental oxygen, is there anything that the medical device companies can do, anything that the administration can do to make those beds more readily available to hospitals that have a high caseload?
If I can share just an observation and thank you, excellent question as well. We saw a lot of what Jessica refers to when all of the states had to compete for product. A lot of, all the states had to compete for personal protective equipment, that they had to compete for ventilators to begin with, they had to compete for drugs and what have you against one another and also against the United States government, they had to compete with them. So there's some politic intervening here in terms of the cost to benefit of a resolution of a particular problem starts to take on different dimensions and, and different views, if you will, in terms of how you respond to it. And there's a profitability index that's part of it as well too, with regard to those who manufacture the product. And as I mentioned, Jessica, there's a cost to benefit that really intervened in this particular case too. Because that, that war, that competitive war, when Governor Cuomo first exposed the fact that some of the products, some of the items, including ventilators, he was going after, were being, were being, by the vendors, for example, you know, we'll sell it to the highest bidder, for example, because if your desperation is that high, then we need to put it out to bid. If the demand is that high and the prices will go up rampantly. The mask, the 50 something, the 56% mask rose to about $8 a pop and so forth. So I don't know how that occurs, but you know, the way that we go about doing that also needed to be changed or prepared for in advance. And something the government didn't do is step in and try to help. Don't know if that answered your question, but your point is very well taken.
I want to jump in. It's now 10:15. This has been a great 45 minutes. We could probably go on another hour or two. But in the respect of everybody's time, I want to thank Dr. Gerald. I want to thank Jim Radsberg, Jim Talarico and David Tob. And I want to just simply say, this is the way we applaud, first of all. We do this with both hands. So give them a round of applause and add Jan Clodner into that for all the behind the scenes. Thank you to each and every one of you. We will see you on the 20th. And I have to do a plug. Hopefully one of my great friends' steakhouses will open called 12 Cuts. And hopefully in late June, probably July, maybe we'll do a happy hour there. Because we had one planned for April 22nd and.
Please, Bill.
I'm sorry?
Yes, please, Bill.
She's inviting you over to drink her alcohol and eat this incredible food at 12 Cuts.
Come do a takeout right now. Come do takeout or curbside pickup if you can. And I think we may be doing a soft little 25% opening as far as meaning the 25% capacity as ruled by the governor on Friday.
Well, we know who to invite to that opening. So anyway, ladies and gentlemen, again, you do what you love to do with people you love to do it with on purpose. God bless and God speed. Goodbye.
Thank you. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you so much.